Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order this meeting, this workshop for the council, for the Borough of Gettysburg, for September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. This evening, before we begin the proper meeting, I'm going to ask everybody to join us here in a moment of silence. As you may have heard, a few days ago, several officers in York County were killed in the line of duty. Detective Sergeant Cody Becker, Detective Isaiah Eminheiser, and Detective Mark Baker were all killed. And I'd like you to join me, please, in a moment of silence and remembrance as we remember the sacrifices given up by these neighbors in the line of duty. Thank you. An executive session will be conducted by the Borough Council immediately following the adjournment of this evening's monthly work session public meeting, consistent with Section seven zero eight A one and Section seven zero eight A five of the Sunshine Act for the following purposes: One, to provide information and to discuss matters involving the employment appointment, the terms and conditions of employment of current or prospective Borough employees; and two, to review and discuss matters of Borough business, which, if conducted in public, could lead to the disclosure of information or matters of confidentiality protected by law. This blue box here on the screen, for the benefit of everybody watching at home, and those here in the, in chambers with us today, these are upcoming dates that should be of interest. Following tonight's meeting, our, the next several meetings are all focused on the two thousand and twenty-six budget process, starting Tuesday, October fourteenth, at our business meeting at seven P M. We will have the two thousand and twenty-six budget proposal presentation as prepared by the staff. We will then immediately begin taking that budget line by line and reviewing it for enactment for two thousand and twenty-six. So we will have a budget workshop on October twentieth at seven P M., a work session, regularly scheduled work session on the twenty-seventh at seven P M. On November third, we'll have another work session at seven P M. November fourth, if needed, we will have another one. That is a Tuesday. Monday, the tenth, will be our regular business meeting, where we would vote to advertise the two thousand and twenty-six draft budget. Wednesday, November nineteenth, that budget would be posted for public review, online and in the lobby of this building. And November twenty-fourth would just be a regular work session unless something changes. And then we would potentially be moving for enactment on December eighth, our last business meeting of the calendar year. We do not have any special presentations tonight, so that's going to take us directly into our first public comment section of the evening. This section is restricted to items appearing on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak about something that is not on tonight's agenda, we invite you to stay to speak at the end of the meeting in the second public comment section. Please use the podium. Please speak directly under the microphone. Please list your name and address of residence, and please limit your comments to five minutes.
Hello, Shelley Nowes, twenty-eight Chambersburg Street, Fresh Boutique. The draft rezoning ordinance was posted online during the planning commission's review. This transparency allowed for thoughtful and well-informed public discourse, as the public had access to the full two-hundred-page document. I am requesting that the draft two thousand and twenty-six budget be posted online enough in advance of the initial October fourteenth budget workshop meeting, so that the community is able to review the working draft and present questions and potential solutions to the hundred-and-eighty-plus deficit. Mr. Moon stated that this deficit is a prominent issue in the upcoming budget, and one of the reasons why it is necessary to increase the height limitations to seven stories on seventeen parcels in the newly formed revitalization district in the new zoning ordinance. Mr. Carr, you have frequently asked the public to bring solutions and not just problems to the Borough. Doing that starts with transparency on the part of the Borough Council and staff during processes like the budget. Access to a four-hundred-page document on November seventeenth, a mere nineteen days and one Borough workshop meeting prior to its adoption, doesn't allow much time for contemplative public input. This limited accessibility would also be over the Thanksgiving holiday and the Christmas festival, two very busy weeks for business owners and residents of this community. I am assuming that since you were able to state there is a deficit of a hundred-and-eighty-thousand-plus dollars, that the draft must be ready to review now, so the sooner the community can start to review this lengthy document, the sooner that we can be engaged in bringing fresh ideas, relevant questions, and potential solutions to the deficit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment? Last call for public comment. All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. We're going to start with Mr. Gable tonight in a discussion of the pension plan text clarification.
This is just a housekeeping item. On the screen in front of you is language from our current draft, our current pension ordinance, as it relates to the definition of compensation, for the purposes of calculating an employee's pension allocation per the document. There is a little inconsistency between the way the Borough's been operating as it relates to the compensation definition, and so the text proposal here is, is here. It's just clarifying what will be considered as compensation per the document. This is not really a decision point. It's just a text clarification. This was brought to our attention by the auditor, who actually caught this this year during the audit, and so we just need to clean that up to make the actual language match how we've been operating.
So will there be any action necessary by council?
There will be, yes. That's why I'm bringing it to your attention now, because in the October business meeting, you'll be voting to amend this ordinance.
Okay. Understood. Any questions on that? All right, thank you. Robbie, the Stevens Run mower.
Good evening. So, a- as you all know, the Borough needs to maintain Stevens Run, along with other right-of-way areas around town. And Bradley and I are always looking for a way to be resourceful with our labor and our staff. And we happened to stumble across this R C mower. It's really not a mower. It's more like a brush hog. It's not a trim mower or a finish mower or anything like that. And we, we talked to the rep from Crownstone and convinced him to bring in a demo, to demo this in Stevens Run. And we do have some videos for that. So it does, it's basically for, for banks over, not over fifty degrees. Okay, so it's Stevens Run. A lot of our banks are less than fifty degrees. We haven't ran across one with this mower yet, and in the demo, that was more than fifty degrees. It will tell you what degrees you're mowing, and the areas that we went to that we thought were going to be the steepest, we were kind of shocked, we weren't, we weren't over forty degrees. Nothing really up to fifty. So it will stop you if you mow something more than fifty-degree bank. It is, it is a, it's a remote-controlled mower. It has a low center of gravity. It's not like you're, you're riding on a zero turn and trying to mow a bank and have the potential to flip the machine over onto you or anyone else. It, it will save a lot of labor hours. Normally, right now, when we, when we maintain the tiber, it takes five employees a week to weed-whack the tiber. And we used to use a sicklebar mower back in the day, when I first started. But this out surpasses a sicklebar mower, because you can't really get the tractor with the sicklebar down in to the run itself, where this one, we can go back and forth across, across the bottom and up the banks and on the sides of the banks, all the way to the top. We, if you want to show some videos, Charles, it will do, it will do tree saplings up to an inch and a half, inch and three-quarter. And if you can find the one that has the, where they mowed over the sapling. This is actually in the tiber, and they just mowed over a sapling that is an inch and Now they will back up over that, chop it up, and we don't have to clean up that degree. This particular bank is out off of, it's behind Church Cemetery, right down from the And there's the Silk Mill Apartments. We thought that bank was going to be more than fifty degrees. It's only forty-two degrees. And we mowed that whole bank with that mower. One of the reasons it's so versatile is because it has wide tracks, low center of It does have an escape system on it. It has a winch on it. If you do get stuck, like, we thought we were going to get stuck right here, but we didn't. But he deliberately got it stuck in one spot in the tiber, and we used the winch, tied it to a tree on the top of the hill, and it just pulled itself out. We didn't have to go get any pieces coming to pull it out. It will mow anything from three and a half inches to six inches. We can actually mow in water and up to six inches. Just want to place it to a waterline and try to get it out of the way through. This is out by the park right now. This is down by the block walls by the bike bridge on Longwood Street. Actually, we're mowing in water. It's one person operated, and we would need one more person to do some weed-whack, small minor weed-whacking around the outlet pipes that come into the tiber and around the, around the embutts. But it's basically two people versus five for, and to mow the tiber, we estimate, I mean, we mowed from, we mowed from the park down to the Silk Mill Apartments within a couple hours of the demo. So we could do the tiber within a day and a half, and we could do it multiple times throughout the year, instead of three times a year. Because when it takes us a week to do it, and with our other jobs that we have to do and our other maintenance that we have to do, we just can't be on that tiber with our manpower constantly to keep the weeds and the saplings down, to try to maintain that for, to minimize the flooding issues if we do have rain.
So you're currently mowing three times a year. You said it takes how many people?
Well, we're really not mowing. We're weed-whacking.
Weed-whacking.
Okay, and when we're weed-whacking, we're standing on the bank, trying to weed-whack this bank, and it, it becomes, becomes a little bit of a, this helps with, with safety factor, you know, if you roll down the hill and you twist your ankle, or, you know, if you bust your weed-whacker, which happens with the saplings a lot, this would, this would save so much time and effort to keep this maintained. It would be able to do it more often a year.
And just a reminder, this is an MS four mandate.
Yeah.
So whether or not we work smarter, we still have to do the work. So the other thing to that is, in front of you is the quote, just under sixty-three, five. This would be a cost share with the Stormwater Authority. Out of the box, we propose one-third for the Borough, two-thirds for the Authority. The reason we're talking about this now, as opposed to the development of the budget, is the market is very unstable at the moment, and so we, we did get this quote locked in through the end of this year. There is no guarantee if that would hold for the beginning part of twenty-six.
Yeah, this is, this is government pricing. This is through Co-Stars, along with an extra discount from Bob Catafredrick with that pricing.
And when would we be able to take delivery?
I really didn't ask him, because I didn't know what we're going to do, but they have units in stock. They have one down, and they have one down to make sure he's down right now.
Has this been proposed to Stormwater?
Not yet. Just the way their, our meetings align were, were first.
All right. I mean, it certainly seems like a safer way to operate than you have been. Anybody have any questions or concerns, considerations?
I, I had a question. This is Patty. Is this something, Robbie, that they can be shared with other municipalities, or is it, is it not the type of equipment that would, it would get too much use?
Well, I, I got that question from Mike Malawicki, the chair from the Stormwater Authority. We could, but the surrounding townships don't maintain a waterway like we do, and they also have great big tractor boommowers that they get down to do their embankments with. We do not, we do not have that.
Does this quote include any type of warranty or, or maintenance program, or for, you know, a computer goes?
It does.
Okay.
It does. It's a year, year warranty for everything, and, and the components, I believe, is a three-year warranty.
Would they train you guys how to keep, like, the maintenance of it and stuff?
Absolutely, yes. And, and, and the rep will come down here and spend as much time as he needs with us to train us. And, and he will also come in once a year just to go over the machine with us to make sure we're not running into issues with electronic components.
Sure. Okay. Have you had an opportunity to speak to anybody else who's purchased one?
I have not. I do know that Hannah from Borough bought one to maintain their reservoir, because they kept flipping the zero turns and having injury claims. So they went with this.
How far away can you stand to operate it?
Up to three hundred yards.
Geez, wow.
And Robbie, this is a mower that reasonably can last ten years.
If it's maintained properly, yes. It could, it just could almost go to twenty years.
Mr. Carr?
Mr. Bales asked my question, but my other question would be, is this, if we, if we were to go with that this year, and for that, what I think is a considerably good price for, for something like that, do we have that in some fund somewhere, Mr. Gable, that?
We do. We have the money. We can purchase this this year without affecting any of our general fund budget.
Yeah, we should do. All right, well, anybody opposed to this?
You comfortable with the cost share?
A third?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with a third.
All right. We'll see what Stormwater has to say, and we'll keep you updated.
Yeah, no, just, I, I mean, for the sake of the folks watching at home, this is not us just spending money willy-nilly. Our Public Works Department does herculean efforts with machinery that is going on twenty and thirty years old, and we do need to be concerned about their safety and the amount of time they're spending on simple tasks. So Mr. Hawbar is always excellent at bringing opportunities to our attention for improving his fleet of machinery, so thank you, and say let's pursue it. All right. Any questions or anything before we move on? All right, great. Mr. Whitmore?
Good evening. I have a short presentation this evening just to discuss subdivision and land development ordinances, S A L D Os. This is something that, in looking over the rezoning efforts and comprehensive planning efforts, it's a component of your, let's say, planning tools. It's something for the toolbox, and gets into some of the more technical aspects of physical land development, as opposed to the zoning ordinance, which is your ordinance that regulates how people use property. I'm going to try and keep this upbeat, so I'm going to introduce you with a really terrible slide that has way too much information. This is just for informational purposes. But we're going to go over subdivision, land development, and generally how the MPC works. That's Municipality's Planning Code. Subdivision, when you think of a parcel, that is a defined area of real property. It's land. It establishes who owns what. It's, subdivision is the change to the physical dimensions in parcel, of a parcel or more parcels. So when we're saying that subdivision, it doesn't necessarily mean you're cutting it up from one parcel, one to five, or something like that. It can also be when you're merging parcels into one group. But, so with colonialism, the way it worked for Pennsylvania, King granted charter to William Penn, and then William Penn gave us this system, which it's actually the standard of the United States, but we provide for a method where you can transfer properties to one another. The way that those properties are then changed legally within the Commonwealth, we have a process where it's either a minor or a major. Minor subdivisions are always going to be just very simple things, lot-line amendments. You have new information with better data from a surveyor. You can have a better survey recorded in the courthouse showing what you have. Also, when you talk about consolidation, that's generally a very easy practice. You're removing lot lines, and a plat is relatively simple. A major subdivision is those category of higher, I guess, realm of subdivision. You're talking about having public improvements, specifically streets are usually the standard when you have a street built, and it's going to be accepted by municipality. It has to be meeting certain standards, in which case then there's a more in-depth review process. For the Borough, division of one parcel into more than two parcels is what kicks things into the major review. Land development is sort of like just saying, when you say construction, it's, it's this idea that it's activities in the development of land. It's the physical construction of new residential housing, non-residential, commercial, industrial properties, and when you change former structures, so it could be a vacant structure, it could be anything really, into multifamily housing or non-residential, commercial, or industrial uses, and that's provided by the MPC. A S A L D gets into public improvements. That's your subdivision and land development ordinance. Generally, developers are required to provide certain infrastructure for what they're going to be building. That way, it doesn't become a public nuisance to facilitate growth. These improvements can include water and sewer, energy connections and improvements, new streets and sidewalks, stormwater management facilities, parks and open space, and as the Supreme Court has established, there has to be some kind of legal rational nexus between what's being required and the development that's being proposed. So this is an example of a streetscape plan from San Bruno, California. All the things that are in the public right-of-way, those might be improvements that are required through a subdivision and land development ordinance. So when we're thinking of not only streets, but street trees, sidewalks, even pedestrian improvements like crosswalks, all of those things are generally going to have design elements that are established by ordinance to ensure that what you're getting is actually something that is practical. When I say getting, when a developer builds their product, we all have to live with it. So this way, we have an insurance, insurance, that we're going to be receiving something that's meeting current industry engineering standards, but also is something that's going to be durable for the future. This can include things like stormwater detention systems as well. This is going to become something, especially going forward, when we're looking at infill development, the limited availability of our storm, of capturing that excess water that can occur in storm events. These things can cost a lot of money, even though it's basically a glorified septic field. These improvements are things that if things go wrong, it's underground, somebody eventually has to fix it because it's going to create problems. Having strong ordinance in place that meets engineering review standards provides a provides that insurance. Going into land development of sidewalks and roadways, SALDOs provide physical parcel development requirements. So usually when we're talking about sidewalks and roadways, it's ensuring that the concrete, the you're using the right amount of stone, you're providing it right PSI, right width, right curb, right curb width, how the driveway aprons are built, I mean, it just goes on and on. But it's really the technical aspects of development that we all take for granted. In terms of additional areas, you have the sign ordinance. We already have that completed as of 2024. That's something that is in the realm of a SALDO. It's not, it's been removed from planning ordinance in the borough. So it's not something we necessarily have to look at this time, but just it's something that goes into that realm of land development. One thing that isn't really covered well within the borough is lighting. This is something that, when you think of glare, it gets difficult to define what is glare. If we have a way to say that it's going to be a certain number of foot candles or a way to measure illumination, that way, we can actually provide a basis for if we have instances where there is glare. Real, real concern from neighboring property owners when, say, some of our larger commercial assets have bright LED lights and we get complaints, this is something that we can, with a lighting component, we can avoid, or at least we can regulate those instances and provide for a comfortable habitat in the night. One thing I that with this image in particular, looking at the square, most of the glare is coming from the municipal or from our streetlights. But being able to have standards that we can utilize for borough development is also beneficial in this regard. We get into things like landscaping. That's currently in the SALDO. But we're we're having a problem as it relates to the viability of said landscaping. The ordinance, as it currently is written, really over encourages planting to the detriment of the sustainability of those plants. So it's one thing if we're requiring like very lush gardens, but if the developer has no way to physically produce the plants that are required or at least maintain those plantings, we end up with just dirt patches or lawns. One thing we can do is investigate guarantees from developers. Some municipalities and jurisdictions use a three-year window whereby there's a bond put up for those plantings. If they die and are not replaced satisfactorily, then we can proceed with utilizing that bond for new plantings. That's just one thing that municipality can do. There's also the acceptable trees listings, planting listings. That's something we don't necessarily have now, that having approved lists, not only it provides a benefit to developers or individuals that want to know beneficial trees to plant, but we can also then potentially avoid, or we could take part in forestry grants, USDA grants, and other type of light prevention as it relates to certain types and species that are not recommended for planting in urban environments. Additionally, we can get into things like parking lot design. Currently, we regulate parking through a combination of the zoning ordinance and the subdivision land development ordinance. Standalone provisions, they could better require turning lanes, the actual design of parking spaces, getting getting a more, I wouldn't say concrete, but that's kind of a pun, getting to a better, better understanding for how these spaces and facilities should be designed in keeping with a proper aesthetic for the borough. So the current ordinance was last updated April 10, 1999. One thing, as a result of the ordinance being over 26 years now, it does not consider digital plans review services. The number of physical copies of plans that it's requesting is very excessive, the cost of which it can be actually counterintuitive, but the the planning process can dissuade a lot of this development. When we're putting excessive costs on paper, it creates some issues that we can potentially avoid as we're going to be reviewing these plans through PDF anyway. Review and approval occurs by the Planning Commission. That's not necessarily the correct venue. The Planning Commission is your recommendation body for establishing if a ordinance or policy is in keeping with the comprehensive plan. The subdivision ordinance has, it has a kind of unique aspect with Pennsylvania where it can be the Planning Commission that's reviewing subdivisions, but it can also be Borough Council. When it comes to the practice of subdivision in the Commonwealth, there really is an understanding that the subdivision process, it needs to be malleable to a certain extent, more so than zoning. So when you have a problem with zoning ordinance, you have to give what's called a variance, and you have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals, and they're gonna tell you no. And it's, it can be disheartening, but that the the process is designed so that they're not granting variances. Subdivisions are a little bit different because we're talking about land issues that there there's opportunities for outcomes that are beneficial. There might be political will to allow for a variance or in that, what the language we use for subdivision, an exception or a modification, some kind of exemption to allow for changes. So often, as it does become a bonding issue, there is a review that would occur with council. That's something that may, you may want to investigate. Additionally, we have issues with sidewalk width standards. And we do have some, just due to the age and the way things were copied, some of the legibility of our design standards is less than stellar. With the ordinance opportunities, we have the ability to have condominium provisions. So that would allow for new ownership opportunities that, while they currently exist, they're not well-defined. So we might be losing opportunities for this type of development. And that that's basically where you convert a multifamily apartment building from a rental situation to an ownership situation whereby either it's a cooperative ownership for the entire building or you have just condominium where you have air rights. But it does provide for more ownership opportunities. Lighting provisions, the landscaping provisions could be strengthened as discussed, having changes to the sidewalk requirements, better design graphics. We could have things like buried utilities requirements, other design specific requirements for what are called extensions from the main. So you have a, like, if you have like a sewer lateral on your property, a second it goes from the property line to the actual main. There's, you can, there's lots of little pipes underneath the ground that there are things that can be designed and planned. And then bonding opportunities to include letter of credits or other financial products. So that was a lot of information I gave to you really fast. The bottom line is that it's an ordinance that you have. It's a, it's a process by which we're able to establish the built environment for the Borough of Gettysburg. It's utilized by all of your property owners to some extent because they're, they're going to be a beneficiary of a subdivision, either through ownership or through use, being that the process could be made more effective, efficient, and in keeping with current restrictions we're having with Adams County recordation, ensuring that the subdivision plans being reviewed are something that can legally be recorded. So that's the quick 30,000 overview. I definitely would love an opportunity, though, to get into this ordinance.
All right, so why are we talking about this tonight? Why are we talking about this now? Charles, would you mind putting the agenda back up on the screen, please? And yeah, that page, the one I wanted to look at. So this page here, which is always at the tail end of our agenda, is a list of tabled items. You'll note some of this has dates associated with it. You'll notice everything in blue is something we haven't dealt with, and anything that's in red with a line through it is something we have dealt with. Mr. Gable pointed out the other day that the vast majority of the red ink you see there is something that council has accomplished in the last three to four years. Prior to three or four years ago, unfortunately, most likely because of the immense logistical impact of the pandemic, all of that blue ink sat there for several years. I think we started doing this maybe around 2020, compiling this list on the agenda.
So I actually do it per council. So every two years, this list will be scrubbed, and then a new list with the new seated council begins.
Much of this-
This was, this was, this council's list.
Much of this, though, predated all of us being here. Some of this goes back to 2018, 2019. And I can tell you that when I was sworn in in 2020, SALDO was at the top of the list. So at that point, the ordinance was 20 years old, and staff was already telling us that it really needed updating. This is one of those sort of boring tedious topics that kind of gets kicked to the back because it's not a, it's not a raging fire that needs put out right now, but it does need addressed. Over the last year and a half, we have dealt with some pretty weighty stuff when it comes to the business of land management here in the borough, most notably with our recent efforts to replace the existing zoning ordinance. This is the next step, right? This is the next thing we need to take care of. If council is amenable to staff taking time to really start to dig into this, I mean, this could eat up a good chunk of John's time, a good chunk of Chad's time. Probably Robbie will have a little involvement. Charles, of course, will get roped in because he's roped into everything. Harry gets involved. This would be a pretty major project. John, when we began undertaking the zoning rewrite, your predecessor was, I'm not gonna say insistent, but strongly encouraging us to use an exterior, exterior firm to help with the drafting of that. Is that something you think would be necessary in this case, or is this more of an internal project?
I think as it relates to the engineering aspect, there are going, it's going to require probably utilizing our contractors in ways a little bit more excessively than we have. But I don't think it would necessarily require going through a full RFQ and having an independent firm come in and run it. Because it isn't, it really does not require a steering committee to the same level as the rezoning ordinance. It, it's more of, is this going to be acceptable to the council as opposed to going through a very, very lengthy public review?
Okay. Chad, can you talk a little bit about your desire to see us address this perhaps?
Yeah, absolutely, and thank you for that opportunity. So, and this goes back, like you said, more than five years, maybe 10 years ago, we started talking about this. And 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 I'll be the champion of this, this effort. There's probably nobody in this room that wants this ordinance rewritten more than me because I use it a lot. And it's really old, and it has issues, and it puts us in a precarious situation, us being staff that are trying to defend the ordinance whenever it's got holes in it, right? So it definitely could use updating. Matt hit nail on the head whenever he was saying that, you know, how this, we only have so much time, the, the staff and the council. And when we were putting this up against the zoning ordinance, there was a clear winner there. The zoning ordinance needed to happen first, right? That's the one that's the fire. That's the little bit more important thing, like John said, you know, if you need to get something different with the, with the zoning ordinance, you need a variance and go to the zoning hearing board. It's a really difficult process. So we just end up going to a lot of waivers with the SALDO because it's the easier process. But it still needs, really, it really needs to be updated. So I don't know that we want to steal the thunder from the zoning ordinance, but as soon as that's pushed over the, the goal line, I would say this is the next most important thing. And then I would say, too, that the street and sidewalk ordinance is the other thing. Now, when we started going through this five, 10 years ago, we started really looking into the street and sidewalk ordinance and almost to the point where we wanted to pull that out as a separate standalone ordinance, just like your sign ordinance, just like a lighting ordinance, just like your stormwater ordinance. They can be referenced into the SALDO. So that's something to think about, too, as we move it forward. But I, I agree with John's answer to the question of, do we need an outside consultant? I don't think we do at this point. And one of the main reasons I say that is because, I don't know, if I had to sign a percentage to it, we do have a draft rewrite already on it. I mean, it's, it's shelved five years ago. Before we got into the zoning, it got shelved. So it would take a little bit of time for, for John and I to dust it off. But we put, we, Carly, myself, the Planning Commission, put a significant amount of time in going through the plant, the, the, the SALDO. We have big tables saying, here's the existing language, here's new language. So I think we have, you know, lion's share of the work done already. More than 50% of it is drafted. So I think it's just a matter of getting our heads back into that 50%, making sure that the, the recommendation suggestion from five years ago are still applicable, and and then build on it from there. I don't think we need to go to an outside source. I think, you know, in-house here between John and I and the Planning Commission, we can probably get something that's, within a year, we could probably pull something together, I would say.
Okay. So I think the suggestion here is they'd like us to consider making this one of our legislative priorities for the next calendar year. Anybody have an objection to that? Do you have thoughts you'd like to share on that? All right. I, I think it makes good sense for us to take a stab at this next. And the overlap with sidewalks is something we need to consider as well. Any questions, comments? Okay, all right, thank you. That's going to take us, we're staying with Chad here for a discussion on the new DPW facilities building.
So let me start with, before I get into the presentation, what I'm gonna show you tonight is a bunch of pictures of the existing Public Works Garage and show you all of the issues, probably a lot of things that you guys are aware of. And it's, and it's not gonna be a lot of rocket science behind it. And then I'm gonna end with some slides that show you the cost tag to replace the facility. It's very expensive. But let me first go back to, again, five, 10 years ago. And why are we talking about this tonight, like Matt used to phrase, to phrase last topic? When we were, I'm thinking maybe 10 years ago is whenever we started talking about, what are the options for the Public Works Garage? And if you might remember, Dan Hilliard always said, I need a building. I need a building because a lot of our stuff's stored outside and it's getting damaged by the weather, and I would like to have a building. And then we've also heard about the fact that this building doesn't have any insulation. So we're talking about building a new building, we're talking about insulating this one. And trying to redo the existing facility the way it stands proved to be very expensive. Just to redo the existing building was over half a million dollars, and this is going back maybe eight years ago. So now it's gonna be way more than that. And that's just to insulate the existing building and to redo some of the, the office space. Then to build a separate building, you know, you're talking about another million dollars. So we were getting a lot of money into just trying to redo our existing facility without, and you still have the same issues, the layout is not great. So we started to, to step back and say, what if we just started with a blank slate? What if everything got bulldozed and we started with a brand-new lot? Would that be a better option? We started realizing real quick that that was a better option. You know, we used a 10 pounds of stuff in a five-pound bag. That's what we got in that little lot, right? We really got 10 pounds of stuff in a five-pound bag. So reconfiguring some things, make some, some sense. It's not, what you'll see whenever I'd start doing presentations, that, that it's not major reconfigurations, but there's these little tweaks and nips and tucks here and there from all of the things that Robbie's learned over the years that can really make things better. So again, why are we talking about it tonight? You guys are coming into your budget season. It's very expensive to rebuild this garage. And you're gonna see that at the end. I'll kind of, I don't want to steal the thunder there. But the next step, if you want to move forward with this, is to do the engineering, the land development plan. So that would be the first, that's not a huge price tag for that, but that would be the next thing. The only thing I would say is that you don't necessarily want to move forward with the engineering if you aren't gonna then buy into this long-term rebuild. It's gonna be several phases potentially, but you don't want to spend the money on the engineering and then- It's going to be several phases potentially, but you don't want to spend the money on the engineering and then not follow through with the rest of it, right? Obviously. So, so that's kind of the history. I'll jump right into it here. The existing building, I'm just going to show you a bunch of pictures, again, stuff you probably already know. The access building is a little bit confusing. Looks like there's a front door here. It's on the side. There's not great drainage in the front. It sits back a little bit further than actually our ordinance requires. The, the ordinance has this build two and they want buildings pulled forward. Here's another picture of, of some, some issue areas. We have these underground storage tanks. There's cracking on the top. It's not in a great location. And the bigger issue is that the tanks are leaking. So one of the two, one of the tanks is leaking. So we're kind of already under the gun that pretty soon we're going to have to pull those tanks out and everybody's going to above ground tanks. So putting above ground tanks right there in the middle isn't a great spot, right? So having a better location for above ground tanks would be important. Anything else you want to say with that, Robbie?
Yeah, let's go back to the fuel system. Just to clarify that, the tank is not leaking into the environment.
Right, right.
It, it does have an issue that we had to abandon the tank and have the tank pumped out and emptied, but it is not leaking out into the environment.
Yeah, important distinction. Thanks for that clarity.
And the diesel tank is still, to this point today, is still, still passed inspection, is still good.
And as I go through this presentation, feel free to, to interrupt me if you have a question about something. Robbie knows this stuff obviously way better than I do. So I'll defer to him maybe on some of the questions, but feel free to stop me. So outdoor, outdoor storage, outdoor storage has a lot of obvious issues. The biggest one's weather, right? You have really expensive equipment sitting out there. Snowplows and electrical things, stoplights. And you have a little bit of storage in the back, but storing things outside is just not a good idea. Plus, we have, you know, in our Saldo that we were just talking about, we have, we make other developers not allow them to have outdoor storage for the aesthetics value. So that's another thing that goes into this. But biggest, the biggest issue for us is, is the lifespan of the stuff that's sitting out getting rusty. So, so this is a picture showing how the parking lot is sloped towards our, our aggregate storage bins. It's just an obviously not a good way to handle it. One of the areas of concern is the, the salt storage area. It's kind of a neat arrangement. If you, you can see this, this door up here at the back, this is where they dump the salt in. And then they come in to this door below and scoop the salt. So that door up, up here is on the top and then they come in to the bottom and scoop it. So it's a neat arrangement. The problem is, is that's incorporated in under the existing building and salt, as you know, eats concrete. So it's starting to eat away the concrete underneath of the building. So it's undermining the foundation of the building. So again, this is the door, they dump in from the top up here and this is the door they scoop from. This is some walls deteriorating. And you can see how the wall is deteriorating here on the side. Of course, it was full of salt, so we weren't able to get it in underneath of that salt to be able to show you really what's happening underneath there, but it's, it's not great. I, I don't know that there's anything, by the way, there's no like imminent failure here. This isn't something that somebody's going to get hurt if we don't address this immediately, but it would also, we, we would be missing the boat if we didn't bring it to your attention and at least start thinking about this for the future. We have paving issues. The pavement's breaking up in several areas. This is one of the worst areas. This is the leaf dump area. I think everybody knows where this is. It's this area here where this, this drop off is. We have that retaining wall and people can back up here, dump their leaves off. And then the, the Public Works comes and scoops it out. The, the concern is, or the issue is, it's right in the middle of, of the facility. So it's kind of not positioned very well. It could be a better location. We have the impound back here, larger than needed, random items are in there. And then over here you have this randomly positioned hose bib that's used for washing things off. Doesn't really have a good designated spot. Anything you want to add there, Robbie, to those two things?
So yeah, that, so that is actually, it's a, it's a, it's not like a fire hydrant, but it's a two and a half inch water source that we use for our street sweeper. But also GMA, it's actually GMA's put that in there for us back in the day for, for dual use, them using it plus us using it.
So this is going into the interior. It's hard to see here, but these are just block walls. There's no insulation or anything on this.
They're single pane windows.
Single pane windows, which, anybody knows anything about windows? That's, that's not great for insulation. The office break room, meeting room is all one big room and there's no separation. You know, if you'd had to have different functions, you're all in there together. Some more pictures of the interior. Interior of the building, as you can see, has an open truss system, no insulation in the roof. Most of the heat loss that you get is through the roof. There's a, a lack of storage in here. There is some storage on top of this little addition, but there's not much. It's just, they run out of space real quick. Anything else you want to add to the interior there, Robbie?
And the, the, the block walls are not insulated as well.
Block walls are not, none, nothing's insulated.
Right.
And, and you'll, in one of the other slides, we're going to show you the bathrooms, but you can see out here, there's some lockers that are outside of the bathrooms and not in the, in the bathroom where they should be.
Because there's not room.
Right, because it's not enough space. Again, another picture of the roof structure. You can see how there's only one garage door to access this garage. So they park over here and they park over here. And if there's cars parked in the middle, now they're double stacked and, and you can't get cars in and out. This is a picture of the lift. It's the, it's the only place where they have a lift due to the limited space. This is the locker room slash bathroom, just not enough room for all the lockers. So some of the lockers had to be out in the, in the work bay. There's also this, this steel plate over top of the septic system. More pictures of the interior. There's, there's, the heat is only mounted, or through, through units mounted throughout the garage. It's just an inefficient system. This over here is the wash bay and so, so picture to the, where I'm showing you all the vehicles, that's the same big building as this wash bay. There's no separate room. There's no separate wall for that. So whenever you're in there power washing, the spray is just going throughout the whole building. So that was all the issues. Now we're on to what is the solution? What, what have we come up with with the best solution? So I'm going to show this to you. What you see here, the, the red and the blue is, is phases. The first thing you might notice is that the layout is going to be very similar to what exists. And it's not because we're not very creative. It's, it's because we've gone through a dozen different scenarios, moving the buildings here and moving the buildings there over the past several years. And we just kept coming back to this current configuration. It's, it's, it's pretty close just by nip it in, tuck it in a couple of different areas. So first let me start with phase one. That's the red, the red. So what we're thinking is this, this is the area over here that's fenced in. So what we'd like to do is, is build a garage on this side. And in the back, redo the, the area where they have the, the stone storage areas. There's also a place for the trash bin to get it properly moved away from where, where it's not in the middle of everything and a location for the above ground fuel tanks. So that would be all with phase one. Again, the fuel tanks is kind of a high priority for us. So we would want to get those fuel tank, fuel tanks taken care of in this first phase. Some of the things you'll notice too is that this building's just moved back just a little bit to make, maximize the space unit utilization. We're not violating any ordinance requirements with the building setbacks here. Same thing with the, the storage bins in the back for the aggregate storage. We can move them back. There's actually some space there that's, that's being underutilized. And then also, and, and by the way, this could be phase one A and phase one B, or you could do both of these at the same time with phase one. We're just for now calling them phase one. But on the other side with this first phase, you'd have another garage on this side. Slight reconfiguration of the, of the, the impound lot and then creating a new location for the salt storage. Right now they have that high place where they can dump and then they can scoop it in from the bottom. This salt storage wouldn't allow for that any longer. It would be more traditional. You'd just dump the salt in front and you'd have to push it in with the, with the rubber tire loader, which is just how everybody, every other municipality does it. That's, that's the more traditional way of doing it. But it's just a better location, getting it out from underneath of the existing garage. So that's, oh, one of the other things that you would notice is right now that there's three current access drives to the facility, we would be eliminating this access drive and going down to just two. It is kind of nice to have that third access drive, but it was really just a nicety. And it's just valuable space that they really need. So it kind of made more sense just to block that, that space off. And then going into the second phase, that's where, so you could do these, like I said, these first two phases independent of each other. But whenever you get into the middle, that kind of all has to happen at the same time at that point. You got to demolish the existing block garage. If you had these other ones built, you could temporarily move some things in there, set up a little office space temporarily in there while you were demoing the, the garage. So we want to definitely do this in phases. We definitely wouldn't want to do this all at once anyways, just because of that logistics of having to move into the new garages and keep operations going while we're building the new garage. But once you do go into this next phase, it's, it's going to be a big bite to, to take off. That would all have to happen at the same time. Some of the other things that you can see is like this side here would be a wash bay. It would have a separate wall, so all that wash water would stay in the wash bay. There's garage doors lined up along the back of this garage, more traditional style of a garage. You can get in and out. You don't have to get double parked. We would like to have a couple of places where you could actually pull right through. So, so a couple of accesses out onto the street from the front of the garage. The entire garage footprint isn't very much different than the existing garage. So this is the existing line. This is the new line. My hand's a little shaky here, but alls we're doing is moving the, moving the footprint forward closer to the wall to make better space. Once you do that, then you open up the area in the back. Right now it's kind of tight. You're trying to get a truck, truck and a trailer around the back there. It's just not a whole lot of space. So moving these things down a little bit and by moving this up a little bit, you get better space to be able to move your trucks and be able to access these garage doors because you gotta think about getting a truck and trailer into, into these garage doors. Still some parking spaces for the employees here with this phase. And then the other thing is this oddly positioned leaf drop then goes to the back. This side would all be the, the, the side where you would have the most HVAC, that kind of stuff, that the creature comforts for the, for the office spaces and your bathroom. Rob, would you, would you keep the bathrooms and the office spaces heated and cooled at a different temperature than the work bay? Or would it all stay at the same temperature?
No, it'd be different temperatures. The office and the break room and the bathrooms would be different than, than the work bay.
And it's kind of hard to do that currently in the current configuration.
Correct.
But in a new configuration, you could have, you know, you could have your, your office space at a, in the winter time at like 65, 70 degrees, but the work bay could be still only at 50 degrees. So just a better use of, of the energy. This is just showing you with some landscaping. Nothing really different with this. Putting some trees in. So as I said, here's the, the, take a deep sigh, and I know this is a little bit hard to see here. But the way this spreadsheet works for the cost estimating is there's two phases. The phase one was what I showed you in red. The phase two is in blue. What we're looking at is the top half of this is kind of the low end and the bottom half is the high end. Of course, there's a lot to do yet with design. We don't, we're, we're taking an educated guess. We did talk to some contractors. We talked to Morton Buildings in Low Bar and a couple of them to get some, some costs on these buildings. That's the most expensive part of this. But, and, and ransom numbers for the land development components and just tried to get you in the right ballpark. But essentially you're looking at over 2 million for the first pa, first phase at the low end and a little over two and a half million for the first phase for the high end. And then on phase two, you're looking at over 3 million or three and a half million. So the total, grand total there, you're looking at somewhere between five and $6 million. Just kind of painting a picture really, really high level, just to give you an idea that this is expensive, right? And of course, we'd be zooming in on those, those numbers over the next couple of years. If you do agree with this, this approach of completely rebuilding, the first step would be to start the design. And design engineering is, I think, listed in this first one right here. So you'll, when your budget's coming up, budget season, that line item will be in, in your budget for consideration. Oh, and, and this does have some contingency. So you might think this contingency looks a little bit weird, but we're adding only 5% for that first phase, assuming that that would happen within the next year or so. And then we put 10% on for phase two, thinking that that's going to be two to five years out until we get there. Of course, you've got inflation costs associated with that. Anything that you want to add to the budget there, Charles or Robbie? Is that?
Yeah, so this, this is a, a budgetary decision for 2026. So I think the council, to Chad's point, needs to make a decision. One, is this a capital improvement plan project that you want to begin to tackle? This is identified in the five-year SIP. And as a side note, that SIP will be updated next year for the next five years. If the council would like to proceed with the engineering next year, we will also at the same time begin to look at construction funding sources. There would potentially be grant money available, RACP comes to mind. But of course, grants are no guarantees. So we would definitely be looking to at least get a grant to cover costs of the, some of the costs of the construction, but it's probably unlikely that you'll get a grant to cover the entire thing. So I do think, as much as I don't like it, this might be a project where we would have to incur some debt, which isn't catastrophic in that we're on the, on the trajectory to be debt-free by 2029 with our general obligation bond from 2016. So it may realign, it may align rather, that we are retiring one debt and incurring another. So just some things to throw out there for you to think about as it relates to funding the construction.
And, and Charles mentioned RACP. There's also another one called local share. That's the casino money. Sometimes that can get put to this. I think it's a, a million dollars is the maximum that you can request for that. So it's still, we're not going to be enough to cover the whole cost, but there are some, some options potentially to, to look for some funding. And, and one other thing I wanted to throw out, I did check with Robbie before I offered this to you, but he, he said if any of you guys want to go down there and see the garage, of course, seeing it in person's better than seeing it on the pictures here. I don't know if I'm doing it justice on, on some of the issues he has.
I think we've all toured it.
Yeah, great, great.
That's it.
All right. Thank you for that discussion, council.
When was that, when was the Public Works building built or last renovated?
I think it was BC, wasn't it?
Yeah. I mean, you're talking, uh-huh. It was way before that.
There's really never been a renovation.
I mean, it was, yeah, there, there really has not been. I mean, it's been piecemeal renovated by John Lawver. By Danny. Some a little bit by me. And Mr. Baker before John Lawver. And I want to say it was, I'm not 100% sure, but I want to say it's at least back in the early 40s.
It's historic. John Lawver, if you're watching at home, can you email us what date it was built?
And John-
So I know he knows it.
I, I can get that answer probably from John. He would probably know.
Yeah, I figured it was-
It was March 12th.
It was March 12th. I figured it was the original building. I was just, was curious as to what, if any renovations. Yeah, and we've all toured it. It's, it's, it's amazing what work you are, your team is doing and- it's amazing what work you are, your team is doing in, um, those conditions, is what I'll say, thank you.
Discussion.
What would be the estimate, estimated cost for next budget year to get this started?
That'd be the phase one civil design?
Just the civil design for phase one, I think it was about a hundred and fifty thou- do you still have it in front of you there Matt?
Yep. Yeah, one forty-eight.
No, we could budget that in two places, one of two places, in the general fund, uh, where you're using current money to to pay for that. Uh, or we could eat into, uh, some of our, um, robust capital reserves. And but just, you know, we do have that kind of, you're marked for other things, so we'd have to look at that, but those are our options.
One thing to point out too, and and we tried it, we ran some numbers on getting to that a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar, but it excludes architectural services, so it specifically says civil design there. And it's because most of these buildings, you know, especially for phase one, um, these are garages that it's it's a it's a pretty standard thing, a a Morton Building, a Low Bar, um, they have their own architects that do the building. So whenever you buy these things through them, through Co-Stars or something like that, it's pretty much of a package deal, you just use their architects. So you guys don't need to pre, pre-architect, you know, or pre-design the buildings. It's just more about the space, getting through the land development process we'll have to go through, just like we we talked about earlier with the SADO, we'll have to go through the planning commission for land and mountain approval, so that's where really most of this is, is just the site design.
Hey Robbie, do you have any concerns with moving things like fuel tanks and salt storage closer to the restored creek bed?
No, the 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 fuel system that that we're intending to put in is not an underground system anymore, it'll be an above-ground tank system, which is a lot safer. And the salt storage, if it's in the type of building it's gonna be in, it's not, the salt's not gonna leach out into the environment.
What would be the difference in the containment for that than compared to what we're doing now? Instead of a block building, we'd be using.
Our salt sto- our salt storage doesn't leach into this, into the anything now, but the way you the way you store it is different, and the way you load it and unload it is different.
I'll add that. So it appears that salt might be dangerous to the environment, but I've been involved with the E.P. where there's salt facility manufacturing places, just one right in Mount Pleasant Township, just to our east. Because we put the salt all over our roads, we literally add the same salt to our food. It's not necessarily a a a hazard to the environment, so the E.P. doesn't regulate it as such.
Okay, thank you. Anybody? Do we want to, uh, commit ourselves and future councils to this expense? Um, I think there is an argument to be made that this can has been kicked down the road a number of times and, um, not to sound conceited, but we have not been the can kickers, we have been trying to take the borough's challenges, I think, uh, head-on.
Uh, I had one question, is this this design, does it pretty much use the whole parcel? As far as what is is down there?
Yeah, yeah, once this is done, there's there's no extra space after this.
Okay, I I don't know if this is the case, I've just heard it come up in the past, that the the police department also has put out the, uh, you know, question about a new facility for the police department. If you're using all the land, it couldn't be a thing where that was also built in this area, right? Okay.
Not unless they want to do away with their impound that they have down there.
Gotcha.
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Uh, from me or Robbie?
From you.
Oh, I'd I'd heard in the past, like, the voiced, uh, uh, question of uh, a separate police department from from where we have it now. And I was seeing if the parcel had any room art to also add that while we're doing this project, but, uh, the parcel doesn't have any room.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bale's question there triggered my thought too, is is that we had, we did start looking at other potential lots and parcels. Would it make sense, would it make more sense for us just to move altogether, but those were just not as economically viable, I mean, one of the parcels, I think, was like a one point seven million, just to just to get through the purchasing, um, that could have been put towards the renovations, right, so we we just kept coming back to the same thing as as renovating the existing parcel, so. I just wanted to let you know that we did kind of turn over every every stone, trying to come up with a better solution here.
All right, so, um, just to kind of boil it down to the question before us here, we're being asked whether we want to put a hundred and fifty thousand dollar line item into this budget, uh, which the proposal which we will be hearing at our next meeting, so we do kind of need to have a sense of direction tonight here. And do we want, if we are, if we are committing those funds, then we also need to be.
We're gonna go through iterations of the budget.
Sure.
The first draft that you're gonna see comes in October, and then we have weeks of discussion after that.
All right, well, that being the case then, perhaps members can take some time to consider the the options here, one is committing to a five to six million, six point four million dollar, uh, capital improvement plan, and I'm all positive that price tag will go up by the time we put a shovel in the ground. Or to coast, um, with our failing infrastructure. So, uh, I I would invite members to think about that, if you come up with other questions, of course, feel free to reach out to Robbie or Charles or or Chad if you have considered, concerns or considerations.
Also think about it in the phased approach, I think that's probably the prudent thing too.
Sure.
Uh, while we're still talking about, I agree, I I'd like to think about it in a phased approach as well, but I also understand what I think Mr. Clayball said, uh, in his presentation, which is if you're gonna commit to some design, you want to make sure that you're gonna follow through, otherwise it's a waste of money on the design. That being said, if I'm understanding the design correctly, um, this is going to, uh, i- i- if if this is what we end up doing, this is not only going to improve a a department that works, and all of our departments work very hard for the borough, but this is not only gonna improve the, um, work environment and workspace for that department, but also, um, our, um, the word is failing me now, our, um, all of our property, um, all of that equipment. It's protecting our investment in in and all of that expensive equipment, I can't even imagine if we added all that up, Robbie, what we're, um, uh, protecting our investment, uh, in all of that equipment right now, so. I would be in favor of a new building.
Yeah, and there's two two things that just came to mind, so Chad hit the nail on the head, and we didn't do an engineering economics analysis on this, but there is a cost savings at the back end by saving, preserving the equipment that we have and the, I I mentioned several times, the HVAC com- component of the building's gonna be cheaper to maintain, operate. Um, so there is a a savings at the back end, I mean, it'll take a long time for that savings to to reach six million dollars, I mean, I'm not gonna sugarcoat this, but there is a, there is a component to that. Uh, and then Charles did men- mention that there is an MS four component to this as well, so we would kind of use that towards some of the, uh, uh, whenever we're trying to apply for grants, you know, we would, we would wanna blow that whistle as well.
Okay.
So what I'll, what I'll do is I'll I'll put this in the first draft, and then, uh, if you want to pull it out, we can pull it out, but
I think that's a fair approach.
In the initial draft, you'll have that, the the engineering incorporated.
Yeah, no, that's a fair approach, um, that with other, uh, projected cost increases, I mean, to be clear, the draft budget proposal does not exist. And but we do know that certain costs are going up, that's how we're able to project forward in time to say we have a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar budget shortfall, because we know that the cost of our health insurance is going up twenty-four point nine percent. So perhaps if we have the entire document, we have, um, both the cost increases plus the capital improvement plans, then we can start to make a considered decision about where we want to apply our, uh, financial muscle. Any comments before we move on? Patty, you good? Okay.
Sorry, I had a, I I did have one, I was thinking about one question actually about just the heating, because I know when we toured it, I mean, there is no heat in that building, is that correct Robbie?
There is, there is, there is heat. There is heat in the building, but it's not, it it's just, uh, a blown it's just roof, ceiling-mounted gas units that blow hot air around. It's not like, it's not like an HVAC, no, it's not in like 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 this this system at the office, it's not like that at all.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
It's not like this system in the office, there's no HVAC system, it's window air condition and.
And there are no, and you can't have mini splits or in in throughout the building then?
No.
Okay.
Not not efficiently, no.
Okay, do we know, and the other question I had is, in terms of, um, the surrounding area, were there, are there any other municipalities that have gone through this recently where they have, um, erected a new Public Works building? Do you know, Strabane or Cumberland or?
So so both Cumberland first and then Strabane, um, both of them did renovations.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so everybody please consider that, um, let's move on to our second public comment section of the evening, this section is not restricted to items appearing on tonight's agenda. We do ask however that you limit yourself to five minutes. Please use the podium, use the microphone and state your name and address of residence, please.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Rio, I'm at one twenty-five East Middle Street. Here just to, um, talk as the president of Project Edgwick Leon, to remind everyone that salsa on the square is this Saturday. Um, it's our celebration of the contributions of the Latino community to our culture and economy. And I also want to take the moment to thank so many people in this room that help make that possible every year. Karen Mesher helps me every year with the permits, thank you. Uh, Robbie Harbaugh and his crew are going to help place the barriers and and so forth, so thank you for that. Our officers help close the street and make and keep our events safe, thank you. Um, and Mayor Freeling is generous every year to welcome the crowd, uh, and give a proclamation. There's a lot of details that go into this, and I will be here, uh, in the break between this and the executive session if any of you need to connect with me about any of those logistical details. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, we will adjourn to executive session, thank you.